Like to call to order the county commission work session for April 7th. If y'all would bow your heads and pray with me. God, our heavenly father, thank you for once again allowing us to come together on this beautiful day to work with each other for both the well being of all the citizens of our community. Father, guide us to continue to work together in spirit of cooperation as we seek solutions to the issues that face the people we represent. Remind us as we deliberate that our power to make decisions comes from you first, and then secondly, the people we represent. Father, finally be with all of our citizens that we move forward together to work to give you the top community that would fulfill your purpose through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. Amen. Very much so.
I believe in the unity of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Simkins, Mr. Ledger, Mr. McElwain, Mr. Beatty, Mr. Dawson, Ms. Spicer, Mr. Buckner, Mr. Britt, Mr. Petty, Mr. Williams, Mr. Grove, Ms. Gray.
It's good to see you all here tonight. First order of business is approval of amendments to the March 3rd work session. Have motion, motion by Commissioner Petty. Madam Clerk, just pick whichever one you want on that. They started slow but finished big. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next item of business, committee reports. Any committees to report? Ms. Gray.
Mr. Chairman, I did receive a report from the Humane Society, but I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. I got it late this afternoon. So I will review it and send it out tomorrow.
Thank you. We'll have, we'll remind that on the agenda. Thank you. We'll see you in two weeks on that. Any other committees to report? Hearing none. The next item of business is new business budget amendment, all funds except school. Mr. Hall.
Friday afternoon, I sent out four different funds to look, for you guys to look at. The general fund 101, drug control fund 122, highway 131, and hotel motel 172. The main thing I went through on this one here was to mainly get payroll and benefit type things was my main objective, to get those items in line. And then as I went through, I looked at some other type things too, but I didn't get any emails or any calls from anyone. If you've got any questions, I'll answer those now, but my main objective was to make sure payroll, because if we go over any amount on those items, that can be a problem with comptroller's office. So I don't know if any of you guys have any questions right now. Yeah, go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just got a chance to look at it this afternoon, but I guess that, I guess a couple of concerns.
What fund are you looking at?
Uh, let's go to page 14.
General fund?
Yeah, I guess not to speak on the sheriff and the inmate, but I know their payroll is way, both of those funds are way over. And I know we increased those budgets big time in this last budget. And so I guess my concern is, are we going to be faced again with another tax increase with, with these, with these increases in the, I guess that some of it's overtime and some of it's in salaries.
Are you, okay, page 14, is there a certain line there you're looking at? I don't see, page 13 is where the actual payroll line is at the bottom?
Right. So if you take, it's actually 13 and 14. If you take the budget, if you take the sheriff's budget and his jail budget.
Yeah.
If you take both of those.
Yeah, now, we had a meeting a little while back, the mayor and my staff had a meeting with some staff, the sheriff. Now, I don't remember details, and I'll share if you may want to come up here and explain what type of situation you've had up there for a while now, so.
Yes, sir. We've had about four to five inmates that have been extremely sick, requiring hospitalization, transport for cancer, dialysis. The ambulance service has been having to take one guy who's a paraplegic for things. The dialysis guy requires some overtime three times a week, has to be in there early. So we've been working and moved some schedules around, so. But it just, it seemed like a one after the other in the the ambulance service come guy to guy today, and the judge wouldn't let him in the courtroom on a stretcher because he's a paraplegic. That's the only way he can roll. He did get sentenced finally. We're hoping that special needs will get him out of here pretty quick, so. Had some of that initially in the, but after the new budget started, we did have some shortages in jail where we can't get below a certain minimum to cause a problem. So we did incur some overtime. We're back, think we're maybe two, two or three short. We're not doing anything with that. We're putting off hiring those. Hopefully that allotted salary will break that number, will look better here in the next couple of months. But most of it was due to inmates being in hospital three, four, or five days. Had a guy had throat cancer, had to have surgery. And when we got a prisoner, that prisoner has to have somebody 24/7 with them in the hospital. We can't just, you know, we furlough when we can, some of these cases. I've not been from, you know, if it was a minor BOP on a DUI or something, DA usually works with us. We furlough while we can, but then there are some. One of these guys is a sexual predator kid. And so you can't, you're not going to let him out. So that, that's where most of it came.
Is he on state time or is he, is he on pre-trial?
Uh, both.
So if he's on state time, we could send him on a penicillin.
Well, not necessarily. They only have about 50 beds statewide for they call a special needs ward. And they like to have them completely sentenced up. One guy's on federal parole, we're trying to, they won't take him till he's sentenced. So that's kind of bouncing ball we've been dealing with. Like I said, a lot of these folks extremely, extremely sick. You'll probably see some of that in the medical fields as well.
Any other question, Mr. Hall or the sheriff?
Sheriff, oh, the salary supplement in-service training, that money's, that reimbursed from the state?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay. So it's actually, doesn't really cost us anything. It just runs through the department.
It runs, it runs through. They did some stuff a little bit different. They gave some bonuses and they targeted an extra round of in-service money for deputies that are designated as SROs, so.
And I don't know if Mr. Bear's here.
He is. Did you have a question? Was there a question on his?
His overtime is the only thing. His payroll lines otherwise are exactly in line as overtime is, but I don't know if he's.
I just need those two budgets. Like if you look back prior year to like this year, that's where all the tax increase went was we had, you know, those, those budgets increased like $3 million if you combine those, those funds. And now we're over, I think we're over almost a million dollars.
Well, it's significant dollars.
Yeah, it's a lot.
I didn't add those up, but I'm not going to say you're wrong there. I didn't total those myself.
Those three.
You can see it right here.
Yeah, those three are, they're already a million over. And we, and we increased those three budgets, $3 million last year.
Well, I know that we gave some, well, keeping up with the neighbors and stuff like that. We were losing a lot of.
Right.
We were losing a lot of employees at the ambulance service to keep, you know, and we did some packages to keep people around.
Yeah, I'm just.
During the last fiscal year.
I just added up cents. I mean, that's four cents if we.
That's right.
If we get the budget, if we're at two and a quarter or 250 a penny, you know, I'm just sitting here.
I don't think we've had that situation occurring this year, have we, mayor, that I'm aware of?
If y'all are done, I'm ready to talk, so. No, as you see, most of those costs are non-recurring is what we expect. So no, I do not foresee a need for income or property tax increase from the numbers you see. We've tried to take care of that in last year's budget and anticipation of that, anticipation of something else I'll be discussing later tonight. So obviously from where the sheriff's issues, when you have sick prisoners, they have to be dealt with. But whenever we have a fund balance that's very healthy, we have a place to go get it. Now, if it becomes a recurring issue year after year, of course, we'll have to do something. But we don't foresee that along with his or with Mr. Bear's. And if Mr. Bear's available there in the back, be glad for him to stick his head out and answer that. Apparently he's not available or he doesn't want to come back and explain it, so. So, thank you. We had to call down to the bullpen. You're into the game, coach.
So fine. My overtime is open, but my regular payroll is down because I've got slots still that's not full, that I haven't backed up with overtime. So my kind of counterbalance is out at the end, but my overtime, yes, it is. I will tell you that.
Are you able to like at some point hire new people to kill the, to keep the overtime? Yeah, right. You're the same position. You can't, you can't find it nationwide.
It's just short.
Yeah. Yeah, understood.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll be glad to answer any questions at this point. Commissioner Williams, I think you've kind of directed the first one at me that answered your question. I'll be glad to go further.
Yeah, I just, no, I just, you know, I voted for that tax increase last year and I kind of made a statement that I was going to be a budget hawk. And if, if I vote for the amendments, I said last year I feel obligated that I had to, I had to pony up at the end, you know? And so it's just a concern that we raised the taxes, we raised, we raised those budgets up and we're already over, and it's a concern to me. I just see it as if it's not this year, next year, it's two or three years down the road. If it's salaries, I understand if we're putting a roof or buying vehicles, but if this is salaries, it's, I don't see that going down, is my view, I mean.
Well, the overtime comes in because of the extra work the sheriff's department had to do with these prisoners. And as you heard, Mr. Bear on that, so we hope it balances out. Again, if you look through the audit and saw what our fund balance was, it's extraordinarily healthy. We're well above the standard 40% we need. That's what I, whenever we brought the budget last year and talked about a tax increase, it was anticipation of things of this type. I know it, you get political heat and it takes a certain level of courage to vote for a tax increase, but we did that to fix it. And frankly, we did it too, because the closer you that are running for election, it gets harder to do it. So we've solved last year's problems. We saw the problems coming up for next year and hopefully for the last budget I do before I leave in a year and five months and 24 days. So whenever that is. But anticipation was take care of those issues now. Again, without getting into the details of the fund balance, you can look at it, but between reserved and unreserved, we're in the 65% range. About $3 million of your fund balance is reserved for certain issues. The rest of it is money that's standard to be there. To be considered exceptional on unreserved fund balance, we need to be at 40%. I think it's roughly around 56%. So we anticipated different issues that come up. Again, with that historical lesson, in 2010, we didn't even have 10% fund balance. We were actually violating the law by spending money to make payroll to spend out of reserve funds. So we quickly took care of that, thus the historic and well-loved $10 fee. So we're, again, we'll be talking next month too with about a budget and about solid ways to do this. So my goal is to fix these issues ahead of time before they come on. So in essence, what I'm saying, we've already fixed the problems being discussed by what we did last year and anticipate the budget we do in May of 2026. There'll not be a need for a tax increase then. Now, if the prison, if the jail gets a bunch of sick prisoners that are paraplegics and need that, that's something we're going to have to look at, but the salaries are stable. The, we are making sure that people are well paid, try not to lose them. Mr. Bear's pay we lifted up, but from what he said and what we're finding in middle Tennessee, we all have the same problem. The raise you gave to paramedics simply stopped the bleeding. It has not increased hiring here or anywhere else across middle Tennessee. And that's just something we have to continue to find. But you did it last year. You took care of the issue and that's basically where we are on that. Be glad to answer any questions for you.
Did you have anything else to?
On the very last sheet, we got the U-Bank property. And I was, it's at 630, and I was thinking the purchase price was at 6. I didn't know if something changed in that.
That's where we did some remodeling and stuff like that too over there.
Yeah, there was other.
Highway Department, yeah. We did some other.
Purchase price was 6 million.
Yeah, okay. It just says, it just says purchase U-Bank property 630. I just didn't know.
Yeah, well, we did some remodeling, so we kept that in that call center to show what we had the real cost was.
I got you. That's it.
Any other questions? We're asking a motion to move this on to regular session, put it on the agenda. Motion by Commissioner Brett, second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Item number two, budget amendment, all school funds, Ward of Education Representative, Dr. Sutherland.
Mayor, commissioners, good to see you. I am here tonight to ask for an amendment to the general fund balance of $3,541,955 for two roofs, Stuart Burns Elementary School and White Bluff Elementary School. These roofs are leaking and they need to be fixed. I brought Mr. Clifton with me. If you have any questions about roofing, because he is my general maintenance and he can ask any intricate questions that you may have.
From a financial standpoint, by moving $3 million from your fund balance, what will that lower your fund balance to?
It changed to 23.5 million, still remaining.
Would that, when you say the budgeted number, would that take in the audited number that we received in the recent audit? So audit and budget are the same? All right, thank you. Questions for Dr. Sutherland?
I was thinking that we were told that the budget, the fund balance had went back up to 30 million. Was that, was that not, I thought the last report we got.
Last this year, someone in June, 30 in 2024 was 32.6 million, but then our budgeted number, you know, we go into, we had budgeted deficit of 5.5 million. So if I add in the 3.2 million, then that would put our fund balance, but the number at 23.5.
When you receive the, you get the audit every year, it gives you a true number of what they have. But as you recall, we approve their budget. We always let them go into their fund balance. The anticipation of this, if it proves to be historical, they will cover the $5 million and then some. That's why it goes back up. And again, it goes back to a difference of how we do our business. And it's not a criticism, just how we do our business. We always budget in county general on our side, no more than we have to take in with anticipation that we'll have a fund balance at the end to either set aside to increase our fund balance or to do additional projects. The school's always taken the issue that they think they will get more money and thus they spend it in their operating budget ahead of time. So you can have it if you want a left-right discussion. I'm the right and they're the left. So without getting all Donald Trump on you here. But that, we, but we bank on the fact that we have the main force. They're banking on the fact they anticipate having, which historically has come true. What we do is on the maintenance of effort, we use a maintenance of effort formula. But we also, the budget y'all asked me if I'm comfortable with is, are they spending any more than they did last year? And as long as they're not spending a penny more than they did last year, I tell you, I'm comfortable with that budget. Thus that drives into the $5 billion negative. So this will, as they said, the 32 went to 27, and now with 3 million more, it gets us to around 23.5. I'd probably have some rounding errors there. So from my standpoint, if that's what they need, I am comfortable with this. They have the money to do it. When they get their fund balance down to true dollars, around 15 million, after it gets even lower than that, I'll have real concern about where it's headed. The world according to Bob. Feel free to ask any questions.
Mr. Gerald.
Mr. Dawson, what they have up there now on most of those is a foam roof that'll be coming off and it'll be replaced with EPDM insulation board, new insulation board and EPDM roof. And these are new roofs, right? Not.
Brand name.
This is very much Danish as well as we do it. The blueboard is.
They got built into that. They have some numbers in there, wood nailers and stuff. If they find some rock stuff, it's in there. Got linear foot prices and they've already got it in there. It's just, do we do 20 foot? Do we do 200 foot? We don't know, but it's.
No, that can go to the government, not till you open it.
I'll be back.
That's, that's fulfillment probably within the next 90 minutes.
I will be back. We are working on that currently and I will tell you it's worse than what we had projected it to be. But we want to make sure that those, these projects are done correctly so that they can sustain, be sustainable for a little while. Yes, sir.
Probably should. So is the plan now, like we asked for last year or a year and a half ago, is the plan now to fix and get all of our existing buildings in shape? Then try to figure out a way to build a new building on down the road now? We're not worried about building a new school now, right?
Well, I'm not going to say that, but I will turn a project in to the mayor and he will hear what we would like to do in the schools, with the schools. But yes, I'm trying to fix what we needed to have fixed some time ago. And we need roofs.
Oh, there's no doubt.
If you don't fix the top, it's, it's hard to fix internally because it leaks on what you, you're fixing internally. So that's some of the reasons why we haven't gone in and fixed the theater at Dixon Middle School. We're just trying to get the big ticket items right now. While we have a healthy fund balance.
So what I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around is I know what our borrowing capability is and I know what y'all's fund balance is, or we're just going, is, is have we pushed a new projects on down the road? Because I'm like Commissioner Williams, I know that what it's going to cost to build schools. I know what y'all was going to contribute to help. And I know what we're able to borrow and it's not matching up without a tax increase. I just want to know we're planning that out.
Down the road, we will have to make some projections with growth coming to Dixon. And so to, to say we would never have a new school in the forecast, I couldn't stand here and say that. But we want to fix what we can currently. Yes, sir.
What is Christian supposed to be done? You're, you're, we appropriated one? I mean, there's so many million dollars for.
Okay, are you, are you talking about the resolution that?
We voted to appropriate the money. I think you, you.
Was, was that the 15 million that you're talking about?
I think it said it, wasn't it? I was thinking it was maybe 10 million or something that we. Eight, yeah, but I, but I was just wondering, this has been on, I mean, in the works for a year or two. I mean, and we're just now getting to it?
Is it these roofs? And, well, these are the two roofs that have come to me and we, it does take a process. The process is lengthy when you have to get architects, that type of thing. So to turn this around, we've probably been working on this project how long, Gerald?
Six months.
About six months on just these two roofs and with the design fees. So you may have heard me speak about these roofs and what we needed six months ago. You're probably correct on that. But now we're here where all of this is done, the bidding process has gone through, and this is what it's going to take to put two roofs on these schools. So we're at the pushing the go button so that we can get started in June.
I'd like, I'd like to add, I did have an opportunity about a week ago to, to get on top of the Barnes Elementary with Mr. Clifton and I'm not a roof expert, but that roof looks horrible. I mean, it really looks bad. And he told me White Bluff was even worse than Burns. And I say, I'm not a roof expert, but I can tell you, if you go up there and look at them, they're bad.
Sure.
And I apologize.
Oh, you're fine.
I'm hearing, I guess I'm going to get me some hearing aids. I've heard a little bit. I, I may be asking you the same question, sir. Uh, somewhere along the line, and like I said, I, this, this is hearsay. Well, one of the school boards told me that in the 15 million, that everything out there that we were doing was just running around the $8 million mark. Now, I know we added some stuff. We added some bathrooms, some stuff and where we were at with it. And I guess my question is, are we going to spend that whole 15 out there? I mean, can we use some of that money or were you saving some of that money for something or, I mean?
Great question, and I'll, I'll add to that conversation. For the board members, they set a priority list for me. Within that list was the purchase of the highway department, which cost us 2.5 million. The renovation of Dixon County High School Sports Complex, which will begin in June, was around 8 million. So that was that that you quoted. Construction of the building at Creekwood looked 4 million. Renovations to Dixon Middle School, we didn't get completed with all of those, but we have painted the outside. We ripped up 93 bushes. We're doing some things to the outside. And then lighting improvements for the athletic fields. We have done Dixon County High School baseball. We have done Creekwood Soccer, Dixon Middle Football, Dixon County High School Football and Dixon County High School Old Soccer Fields with LED lighting. Each of those at the cost of around almost $200,000. So when you add that up, 15 million goes by very quickly.
Okay.
And so that, that was the priority list set forth by the board. And so I hope that you can see that due diligence, we are trying to put, get some work done on some projects that are needed.
Any other question, Dr. Sutherland? Open forum motion to put this on the agenda, motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any other questions or discussion? Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote stating aye. Opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Southern. Item number three, speed limit on Baker Road, Commissioner Gray. Sheriff, Sheriff Eads, wouldn't blood so, kind of flash.
So we got a, ran a survey, a seven day survey. February, the twenty fifth through March, the fourth. We surveyed three thousand four hundred and three vehicles. Speed limit there is currently forty five miles an hour. Out of the thirty four hundred vehicles, six hundred and forty three were identified as speeding. That's about nine, about nineteen percent, maybe if I did my math right. As y'all, I sound like a broken record, the eighty fifth percent sticking to the data and being consistent. The eighty fifth percentile was forty one miles an hour in one direction and forty four in the other. So that's under the forty five. The average speeds were thirty seven and thirty eight. Just to, sometimes I bring up average. Also had Lieutenant do a crash study from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty five. That pulls any crash reports that deputies made or state trooper or any other agency. There were seventeen. Thought I had disorganized mayor.
Okay.
There were seventeen total crashes. That's not a lot. Out of the seventeen, seven of those were deer hits and can't really contribute that to speed. Given the low crash volume and it being the eighty fifth percentile, my recommendation would be at this point, not to change the speed, but just leave it at forty five. As we continue to grow, maybe someday y'all can get a real traffic engineer to study the entire county. Where you might, I don't plan it in your ear and then it'll shut up. You might consider a countywide thirty five. And then any roadways like Baker's work that has higher eighty fifth percentile. Then you just post the ones that you want forty five. And that might speed up the process. But, but like I say, sticking to the numbers, and that's what I've consistently done. It is so close, it's just barely under. So eighty five percent of those vehicles are not even doing the speed limit, forty four and forty one. So I, my recommendation based on the data would be not to change the speed limit at this time. And along with, if we'd had higher crash data, that, that would have made an influence to drop it, you know, ten miles an hour, but.
I think what I'm hearing from the people that live on that road is because of those that do speed so much. And I know we all have roads where we've got those people that are just zipping through, just trying to get from point A to point B the fastest way they can. Is there any kind of way to monitor, say, a road in a certain section for a while? Like a device that would, that would record when those?
Yeah, yes, we, we have a speed machine that can, it'll flash. It's about seventy percent effective people till they get used to it. You just can't leave it out there. Baker's work is on our frequent speeder list. What I would encourage your constituents to do is to either call you or just have them call me directly. If they have particular vehicles, particular time frames, then I can, I can make assignments to patrol. If they're not answering an active call, try to look for the red pickup truck that's just being one of the six hundred forty three out of the four thousand or thirty four hundred that, that are doing the speed. So of course I understand all it takes is that one, but we're certainly can do some deployments with the speed machine and certainly if we get better intel. And of course we can use some of this, it will show us fluctuations when is the best time. Cause you know, it's a big county and typically eight deputies on duty just for patrol during that time. But yeah, you can, you can have them call me, email me and I'm happy to update the patrol objective list. That's what we call it. So have them there, you know, if it's between seven and eight in the morning, we'll do our best to have somebody looking for them. So for right now, like I said, I'm not saying the order ever not come down, but right now I just, that would be my recommendation.
Commissioner Gray, you have a motion?
Yes, I'll make that my motion.
To do what?
Leave it at forty five. And then we may have some more people come next meeting and may.
So you want to move it forward to be voted on to leave it forty five, so an appropriate motion? We're not, we're voting not to change anything?
Cause I'd like to make it so that we can have a public hearing on it for the next meeting. Cause I know I've had people emailing me about it that were wanting to come next meeting. So what do I have to make a motion for, for that?
I think you can just vote to put aside it to the next meeting and then it'll be on there for discussion.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, have a second? Second by Commissioner Simpkins. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote stating aye. Opposed, thank you. You'd like to make another motion, though, there, there's not an agenda set, so if you'd like to put something to raise it? Is that what you're asking? Oh, I thought you meant it wasn't high enough or low enough. Item number four or five, I don't know which way, I've had two agendas with things flipped over. My number four says resignation of magistrate Richard Lee. That's a notification y'all for exception of resignations. All I need is a voice vote, y'all accept that reservation? Yes, okay, no, thank you. It's been done. Item number five, surplus vehicle from Sheriff's Department to Watertown Police Department, Sheriff Eads.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So back in February, I received a email and a phone call from Chief Hinderlight of Chief, Police Chief in Watertown, Tennessee. It's located small town, I think they're four or five police department who requested if we had any surplus police vehicles, that we would be interested in donating. Kind of like we did with the Tennessee City and I think we've donated one to the rescue squad. I told him, I said, look, that's, that would be something I would bring to our board of commissioners and have them consider. We, we have a twenty thirteen Ford Taurus that has two hundred and thirteen thousand miles on it and is eligible to be surplus. I have not got any current requests from any, any of our rescue squad or volunteer fire agencies. Tennessee City has a request in when we get SUV to surplus, they would be interested. It's strictly your decision. I met that chief, I don't know him real well, but he thought of me because a department he was with back in, in, in the mid teens purchased and, and received a, a patrol car from Bellmead. I kind of got a reputation as being a used police car salesman. Cause we marketed our surplus and of course we pull, we had a, a policy, we pulled them less than a hundred thousand miles. So we could recoup a higher instead of being worn out. I, I've got the, the fleet lieutenant is, is trying to give me a best estimate, what do you think it might bring on gov deals? I ran a quick NADA, low base price, fifteen hundred, high twenty seven hundred, average twenty two hundred. But there are some, sometimes if it's a police car, the value's less. Like if you run a Dodge Charger, because they factor in idle time and all that. And so I told the chief, I will take your request to the county commission before we move forward with anything. And so what has, they got a couple of new cars back in twenty three. But he, he went into detail and said that they just started a big sewer water project. And so they had to get rid of the three that were worn out. And what he's, his purpose for this car would be to have a pool car. That way, if they wreck one of their regular duty cars, they'll have something to get into while that vehicle's being repaired. That's, that's what his motives are to use this vehicle, so.
Any questions, Sheriff?
I mean, I'm good with your decision either way. I mean, I, it would be a nice gesture. Thank you.
Motion by, was that Commissioner Grove, who was the second? Thank Commissioner Ledger.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Maybe y'all have a new friend up there.
We have a proper motion to second, all in favor, vote stating aye. Opposed, thank you. Other business pavement assessment report, Mr. Hodges.
Well, over here, go. Y'all, I, I applied for a transportation planning grant. You guys, we've done a match on it. This is the, I'm not going to try to say her name because I'll murder it. She'll see, she'll tell y'all what her name is here just a little bit. But this is what come of it. She's got a little presentation she's going to go through and y'all got any questions, ask her.
Thank you, Jackie. Hooked up here. All right, it's thinking. Good old technology. I get, it's thinking, it's going. Trying to unplug it. It's going to hurt it or help it.
The Great Wall of Van Lier.
There it is. Okay, I'm going to leave it off of presentation mode for some reason it's not liking it. I jinxed it, okay. Hopefully it'll load up here shortly. Like Jackie said, my name is Liesel Gerther and I'm with KCI Technologies and we are out of Nashville. We're a traffic engineering, transportation planning firm. And hopefully that'll do it. Let's see, I think it's my computers acting funny. Okay, I'm not going to touch it. I think it's presentation mode that's freaking it out. All right, I'm just going to leave it on like that. So you'll see the notes there. So like Jackie said, I'm going to be speaking about the pavement condition assessment that we completed. This was through a T dot transportation planning grant. Talk a little bit about our project schedule, what we did as part of the data collection and analysis steps. Talk about some of the deliverables and next steps. So we kicked this project off in July of two thousand and twenty four. We began our data collection process. Really our infield collection began in October and it went through about mid-January. And then we crunched our numbers, created some budget scenarios to look at if we varied funding levels, what that would do for the pavement condition for the, the Dixon County roadway network. We also bundled all of our analysis and the data into a report. And then tonight we're presenting our findings and this is really the last step as part of the grant or the major, last major milestone, I should say. Okay, so we started out with T dot E-TRIM's roadway network. And from there we reduced the network down. So obviously T dot takes care of the state highways, so remove those roadways. We also removed gravel roadways and then we worked with Jackie to kind of fine tune some of those roadways where they get close to, say, the city of Dixon to make sure that we're looking at county roadway. So out of a seven hundred, almost seven hundred mile network, we pared that down to about five hundred and thirty miles for our infield pavement collection. So as part of that, we had two folks in the field just about every day of the week. And what they are looking at are the pavement distresses. So the different types, the severity, and then the extent of those distresses. So that's everything from, won't get too detailed, but potholes, edge cracking, longitudinal cracking. There's about twelve different distresses that our, our infield inspectors measured. We take samples of the network. So we have a, let's say a mile long segment. We look about, we look at about two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet of that, trying to pick the best representative sample for that pavement condition along that segment. So we had tablets where we went in there after the data collectors collected their information in terms of that severity and the extent of those distresses. And we put that into what is called a paver software. And that is a pavement management system that the Colorado State University offers. It's really handy. It basically tells you, crunches the numbers, tells you kind of what the, on a scale, which I'll talk about here in a second. What, where does that segment fall along that scale of really A to F? If you think of it in school in terms of the conditions. And so what that does is we put all that information into that software and it is, basically takes that information and crunches the numbers in terms of what those funding scenarios that, that we played with. And it tells you which roads, which treatment should go in which segment and when. So again, like I mentioned, we surveyed about five hundred and thirty miles. You can see the pavement rating system there. Industry average is, is for a network PCI of about seventy, so right on that fair satisfactory line. And then of course it goes all the way down to zero where your pavement has essentially failed. So think basically turning to gravel at that point. So what you see here are the results of all the different roadways that we collected and those PCI values. A breakdown based on the condition category. So the weighted average network PCI is about fifty two point two. Again, like I mentioned, industry average is about seventy. So it is a little on the lower side. The graphs that you see on the bottom left, that is showing your minor collector streets. That had a little bit higher of a condition overall as opposed to the local streets, which make up the majority of your network. So the map on the right, not intended to see every, every single street that we did, but can kind of give you a, a feel for, we're really all across the county looking at all types of different roadways as part of you all's network. So the whole point of this is really to, this is the concept of pavement preservation. And so if you, in the green, this curve is essentially showing the degradation of pavement over the course of, I believe it's twenty years, yep. So the whole goal of this is you can spend a little money while we're there, kind of earlier in the pavement life. So if you do some of those cracked ceiling, you may have seen those streets where they have all the squiggly lines all over them. That's what that's doing is you're spending a little bit of, a little bit of dollars now, but you're really extending the life of that pavement. So what you're seeing here is kind of what that paver software is breaking down. It's trying to tell you, again, using those dollars that you do have, how can you maximize those dollars and really extend the life of your pavement as much as you can? So again, like I mentioned, in paver, it's a pavement performance model. And so for each of the minor collector and local collect, local street, excuse me, we've identified the most common and typical treatments for each of those PCI value categories. And so what we did was we utilized some numbers from another project that was here in the region. And we use those unit costs and put that into the software. We did grow those costs using a four percent inflation factor to make sure that we're getting some, some accurate, relatively accurate numbers. And then like I said, the paver software recommends different treatment types for specific streets and kind of timelines that out as a guide. So we wound up running about six different budget scenarios. I know this is, this is hard to, hard to read here, but the first one was do nothing. What if you spent zero dollars? So we wound up running about six different budget scenarios. I know this is, this is hard to, hard to read here, but the first one was do nothing. What if you spent $0, which is not what you guys do. You guys spend about 1.2 million per year. So that's what I have highlighted there in the box. We also looked at 1.5 million per year, so about a 25% increase in the funding levels. We also looked at maintaining that current condition. So what that means is that PCI value that I mentioned of 52.2, that would be about 17.6 million per year over the next five years to be able to maintain that current network average. We also looked at, well, what if you wanted to try to meet that target of the, the industry standard of 70? So we're looking at 23.4 billion per year. And then we also looked at an eliminate backlog situation. So that's where you basically bring every roadway that is under that PCI critical value of 55, trying to eliminate all the backlogs if you had all the money in the world. So that was our sixth and final scenario. I think the point of this graph really is we're looking at the red line on the bottom there and doing nothing versus 1.2 million a year, or even 1.5 million a year, isn't necessarily really changing that network weighted average PCI. Because if you, again, if you think back to that, that graph, what we're doing currently is really just trying to extend towards the end of that pavement life cycle. So we're not really impacting that weighted PCI average across the network. So I think that's important to note in terms of the, the trend line there over the next five years. This is showing the remaining backlog. So if you wanted to, through all these different six scenarios, again, the point of the graph here is just showing that by delaying the maintenance and repair, those costs do build up and increase over time. So in terms of our deliverables, these are our recommendations based on what we found and based on the funding levels for the county. So really, the first step is setting a countywide target for whatever is an acceptable weighted average PCI for your network. Again, the industry aims for 70, but you guys really maintain a lot of roadway mileage out there and that may just not be practical. So it's important to at least identify an acceptable network PCI for you all and then increase funding as such to achieve that goal. It's also a good idea to set up and regularly update that Paver software. It's a relatively low cost piece of software, at least software wise. It's under $1,000, but that really helps. It really does all that legwork for you again in terms of identifying your most bang for your buck projects that you're gonna get. And building on top of that, it would be great to do an inventory every two to three years is roughly the industry standard there. And that would also help further calibrate your model to your specific conditions in the county. So on top of that, and this is in addition to, I should say, so our recommended, and I'll get into that, but this is really a short, short-term, one-time funding of about $3 million. And what this is, is really addressing those really critical segments that are out there currently. So again, this would be a one-time funding. There are funding options, whether that's through the general fund, which I don't know you all's situation specifically, could be bonded. There's other, other ways to fund a one-time effort like this, but again, based on what we saw, these were the most critical segments that we recommend addressing within the next fiscal year. These are the roadways. Again, you can't, you guys can't really see the map, but we've got it identified based off preventative and stopgap maintenance for those various segments that are in those really poor conditions. So the midterm recommendation is to maintain that current level of funding that you guys are currently applying, which is about 1.2 million dollars. The, the one-time effort as well as this, they're complementary, so they work in concert with each other. And we have a detailed map. This is just showing 2030, but we do have it broken down for every year until then to show, to use as a guide in terms of which roadways should be addressed in each, each year coming up in the next five years. So those, I know I ran over it really quickly, but those were high level, our, our recommendations and findings from the study. In terms of next steps, again, this is kind of the last step to close out the grant. And as part of that grant effort, we've got Herman here with TDOT assisting us today. He'll be coordinating with you all, but really the last requirement of the grant is to either have the mayor and/or the city commission pass a resolution. And all that is, is just simply acknowledging the completion of the study, that it met you all's scope and schedule requirements. And once we get that final resolution, we'll be able to wrap up our final report. We'll add that in. And then that's when the fun begins in terms, terms of moving on the, the pavement preservation plan that we've recommended. So I'll be happy to answer any questions for you all that you may have.
Go ahead. I'll finish up. Y'all go first.
Mayor, this report, does this just help us get some subsidized money to help with our pavement project or is it all 100% funded by us by doing this?
Well, I know they spoke of funding, so I guess I'll go first. The issue we always have is, I think what misses in the report, and I know disrespect meant to you, is how far we've come with roads, especially in the last 10 years. So that's nice to see. But we've done it on the back of the taxpayers of Dixon County. TDOT has different programs they do. One of them is through our, our rural planning organization, but the last TMA that the state of Tennessee did, they gave every MPO and RPO money in the state except two. One was ours and one was directly south of us, the state line. So until TDOT, the governor and the state legislature and the commissioner start taking serious about finding us recurring income to take care of this, the state's asking us to do this on the backs of us. They're not sending us any more money. They sent us $3 million a few years ago for one-time money. But we put it all into pavement and clean up roads we have. So the report's nice, it's informative, but there's a practical matter how we fund it. And apparently, there's no move to raise taxes in this room to do that. So we're gonna have to get state, help from the state legislature or continue on the process we've already been in. That's my opinion. I think everything referred to, to be good, we have to spend more money. So that will be up to this body in which I'll decide.
I mean, what, what's your recommendation? We got a healthy fund balance. Would you like to upgrade it all at one time and try to use the fund balance money this year to try to really upgrade our road system? Will that help with the state funding, with our fund balance?
I think it's something we can review, but again, we're gonna hear later on tonight that the, the city of Dixon is no longer gonna give the school system a million dollars a year. So we have to find money to take care of that. We see we're under stress in the budget now, as discussed earlier by the sheriff and by Mr. Bear. So we're fighting a lot of battles at one time. This is what we tried to anticipate last year. So again, we're gonna have to set a list of priorities. I'll be glad to make your recommendation in, well, a month from today. We'll be presenting a budget and let y'all look at it. But again, as I tell y'all every year, I'll put together a mayor's budget, but at that point in time, it becomes your budget. Y'all can approve it, modify it or deny it. So again, I'm gonna line this project up with all the others we have going on and let y'all make your decision on that. But I will give you my recommendation in 30 days from today. Thank you.
Jackie ordered this. How did this come about with them coming down with all of it?
Yeah, it was a grant that was out there, made available to us.
I remember the $3 million you were talking about, like, but this year, I mean, them coming up all the numbers and everything and them inspecting the roads. Who, who authorized all of it?
It was a grant that y'all voted to do that we brought to you about a year ago, about a year ago. So you voted that. We had a minor match in it. So it was to.
But it wasn't no five, it wasn't no million some dollars, was it? I mean, a year for five years. Ain't that what it's gonna cost?
That's a.
A million point two for five years?
No, that's their recommendation on what needs to be spent.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm telling you. Where did we get to that? I mean, I thought we had Jackie for the job of taking care of the roads.
Not. What this study done is just something to show us the condition of the road. This ain't really got anything to do with money. That's just their recommendation of what it would take to get the roads up to that industry standard. The reasoning for the study was just so that we could have, have some documentation to show what our condition is. Now that I have this documentation, I'm going after different avenues of money. I've been doing that with different grants, been applying. This is just one grant that we got to start the process. Now we can go farther and, and try to get some different kind of money to come in to help us out with this. There's no possible way we can do this off the taxpayers. It just ain't feasible. Mayor's done great for the past several years, as he said since 2010. We, we jumped, just the, the condition of our roads have increased. Just unbelievable.
Yeah. Well, what did this cost the county? This cost the county for doing this?
$22,000, I think.
$22,000.
Yeah. For, for them to study the roads in the county to give us, so we, we can have grade and documentation. That way I can go forward and, and ask for money. You know, if you go ask for somebody for some money, they wanna know why. Now we've got something, you know, I could say, here it is. This is why.
I think that might, this will help you collect.
Absolutely. Earlier in the year, I went to TDOT to, to try to get some money for some bridges because as you know, we got some bridges coming up that we're doing. You know, it wasn't a problem for me to go to TDOT and ask for it. When I went, I laid documentation down in front of them, showing what we had, where we was at. We don't go asking because we don't put money in the game because we do. You guys put a lot of money in it. This is just another tool for us to be able to use to go after that extra money.
Well, I got a question. What is the thing for the, the normal paving? I mean, what should it be? I mean, as far as TDOT recommendation? I mean, is this supposed to?
Inch and a half.
Three inches?
Inch and a half.
For, for. Well, when I was a kid, that was, it was three or four inches.
If you put, when you put binder down, you put down two inches and an inch and a half of topping on top of that.
So it's, it's three and a half. And you're talking about the binder being, being the road.
Well, the binder is actually the, the type of asphalt. It's got a bigger rock in it. It's, it's just, it's got better weight, luck weight, a better weight rating to it. And then the topping seals it off so the water don't get in it.
Yeah. Well, you look at the potholes there, like, see, the asphalt ain't but a, ain't just something thick, you know?
A lot of the older roads, you know, it's just where they were trying to get across the county, trying to do all they could do to make it look good.
These are, as I say, too, going out around these little narrow roads and where they lean over to the side and actually the roadside's giving away.
That's where they, they, over the years, they get that, got that road a little bit wider and a little bit wider. You know, they just, roads ain't built for the trucks that we got on these days.
Yeah, that wouldn't do anything at all. That wouldn't have anything to do with the estimate of what the road's gonna cost. That's gonna cost some excavation work, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's an entirely different issue.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah. But I hope I answered y'all's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Any other questions? Yes.
I, I just, I guess my thing was, so this grant just paid for them and, and I, I don't see that we need any kind of resolution. If, if we paid them, unless they need a resolution for us to pay them, if, if they're paid up, I'd say, hey, thank you and we appreciate it and.
The resolutions for their part, so that they can satisfy the state.
That's for TDOT. Yeah.
We would need a residential sign or document saying that you have this plan that you are in agreement with it so we can close out the action.
So that, I, I mean, I'll make a motion just to say, let's close it out and be done with it and then we'll do what we can do.
Thank Commissioner Beatty. Thank you, Commissioner McQuinn. You have first and second. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing that, all in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Thank you for presentation.
Thank you.
Under other businesses I referred to earlier. This letter I found on my desk on last Wednesday, April 2nd, it's a mayor from, it's a letter from Mayor Wise. Dear Mayor Ryle, per the terms of the resolution 2021-1 of the Dixon City Council, the city of Dixon notifies Dixon County its intent to terminate the participation in commonly been referred to as the 1969 agreement effective July 1, 2025. Beginning the 2025-26 fiscal year, the city of Dixon will discontinue providing additional percentage of its local option sales tax revenues in excess of 50% required by Tennessee Code Additive 67-6-712, Prince's A, Prince of Two. I believe the city of Dixon has more than fulfilled its obligation on the original intent of the 1969 agreement between Dixon County and its six municipalities, which was to assist the county at the cost of constructing Dixon County High School. As of day on, the city of Dixon, Town of Slade, and continue to participate in the agreement. Over the last 55 years, city of Dixon has contributed an estimated $60 million above and beyond as what is required by state law and will continue to allocate Dixon County's 50% of local option sales tax to assist in funding education. The city of Dixon also will continue to consider more direct means of support for Dixon County schools as its physical plan will allow including financial and income contributions, IESROs. The 90-day notice of pending city council approval, so you have the opportunity to account for funding change drafting in the county's FY 2025-2026 budget. Sincerely, Don Elwise, Jr., OD Mayor. So make you aware of that. That's a challenge we'll have this time. We appreciate the city's participation in it for the last 55 years. So we'll make whatever adjustments we need. I put that in the MOE formula that we use, the five-year MOE formula. And because how it's weighted, it has no effect on that. So we just have to see what the effect is in real dollars when we understand the complete funding of schools as we gather that information from Mr. Hall and from Dr. Sutherland and her staff as we go forward. So can I tell you, a million dollars basically is 4% property rate, but I'm not advocating that. That's just a comparison of what that effect is. Schools will receive the funding of the increased value of the penny once we have that. Also, property tax is not their only source of funding. It's also sales tax, which we've done very well in collecting on that. So again, this by itself is not necessarily detrimental completely. It is a hurdle we have to get over, but it's something we'll be working through on the budget over the next three weeks as we prepare a budget present to y'all on May 5th, I believe, at 6 o'clock. So be glad to answer any questions. Yes.
Did it have a timeline to take, cut that off?
Was it like a forever deal or, or how does that work?
I might let Mr. Reagan speak more in detail on it, but my general understanding was that the agreement was to place Dixon County High School and pay for it was by each, each municipality paying an ex, the extra amount. The initial amount on that, and it was something extraordinarily low. It was in the low five-figure number. To build Dixon County High School was roughly around a $2 million project at that time. So needless to say, it cost, it probably cost $50 million to build a high school today. So, but the way the document was written, it wasn't the best written document, but there's no, there's no legal requirement to bind them till they pay for it. Because in essence, and I sit on the Dixon City Council and can make the argument that Dixon County High School's been paid for more than many times over at $60 million. So again, we appreciate what the city of Dixon, the taxpayers of the city of Dixon have done. We also appreciate all Dixon counties that participate in that because cities get more of their tax revenue from sales tax. So not only the citizens of the city of Dixon that were helping assist in that, all of us that shopped, or all of you that don't live in the city of Dixon shop there, you also help participate. So thank you to everyone from Dixon County, but I know you probably read the city of Dixon has many projects coming up and I'm sure like, like us, they need additional funding and, but that is the letter. It was hand delivered to me. So that, that's what I know about that. How much? A million dollars a year. It, it got up highs and number because the formula had no cap on it either. And so there was a subsequent sell, local option sales tax increase in Dixon at one time from going where it was 2% to 2.25%. They initially gave us the additional amount on that, but then they drew that back many years ago, realizing that, that was the original funding on this. So roughly, it got up to where the actual dollar is around 1.7, 1.8 million, but they stair stepped it back down to where we're at about a million dollars on that.
What you're saying, the county's gonna think of the site then?
Yes. Either by cutting, reducing, or re-appropriating funds that we already have.
Or we open our own hand, or we give them?
Or what the state has to say is?
We give them their MOE formula. We give them excess of that of roughly, and it's gonna be a guess at this point, of roughly about $5 million, which goes back to the earlier conversation. We let them go over that amount because we know they're gonna collect it. The, again, with the new TISA or TISA, however you say it, I'm, I'm not a cool kid. I'm not sure which way you say it. But there's additional funding coming from the state that could very well make it up. But again, without Dr. Sutherland, which she's not, doesn't need to give us a budget yet, but we. but when she does, I'm sure there's increases she'll be looking for in that. So I'm sure she's anxious waiting state funding. But so this is an issue, but I just want to make you aware of it and it's something that Mr. Hall and his staff now are going to deal with and present you a balanced budget on May the fifth. Yes, ma'am?
I know a couple of months ago, we passed a resolution in support of a bill that was going to the state where the counties could get back more money that we paid into from property taxes. Is there, is there an update on that? Has that passed or is that-
It's between state and local government. Did you need him?
I didn't know if, he was shaking.
No, we, we were attempting to get fifty percent of the transfer tax back. In Dixon County's case, ironically, fifty percent of the transfer tax that Ms. Yates collects is a million dollars. That'd be very helpful. But the, the wisdom with our folks in the state legislature and all the folks smarter than us, think they need to stair step it and bring it in, much like they eliminated the hall income tax. So we could possibly see up to ten percent of it this year is maybe our best day and it, it take care of itself over time. But it's one of those deals, back to what I mentioned earlier about what the state of Tennessee does, they're very magnanimous and love to bring big plastic cardboard checks and get their pictures made about giving us one-time money. But we need consistent sources of money over and over to fund highway road projects, to fund schools. So that's something we need to do, but the state of Tennessee and they, and again, the state of Tennessee, as we're talking about how they budget, they budget, they budget on anticipated growth. So they didn't have the growth in last budget or this budget they think they're going to have. We intend, we budget on zero growth. We assume that next year will not be any better than the year we had before. So they're kind of in a pinch right now and that's money they took some years ago and we'd like to have it back. But no, it won't happen. We won't get the fifty percent. That, that's a guarantee. Thank you. It's a good question. Be glad to answer any other questions. I've got more.
What's that going to affect the county? I mean, would they taking, taking the funds away for this and that? And I think that some of the Mexicans has got to pay for their intuition of the schools. I mean, ain't that, ain't that going to be an issue too?
I'm not really sure. That's going to be managed more on the state level. So the funding, you know, we roughly get seventy percent, the schools get seventy percent of their funding from state of Tennessee and Dixon County provides about thirty percent of it. So again, what, what the state legislature ends up doing, I'll be, I have no idea.
See, watching usually they, they, they cutting some of that, the illegals out? I mean, as far as they got at school, they got to first their own intuition now?
I, I've, I've read some of that, but I, I'll be honest with Commissioner Dawson, I haven't thought it in detail.
I just wonder what it was doing for Dixon County, what is going to happen?
That'd be a good question and maybe when the legislature, I believe they close out in the next three weeks. So we'll have a lot of answers about bills that are proposed at that point in time and have some idea. And I know Dr. Sutherland from the school standpoint will bring us that. So we'll have a good, long budget meeting in twenty-eight days or whatever, you know, about twenty-eight days. Any other questions? Any other, other business? Commissioner?
Fish fry is next Saturday, this coming Saturday.
What time of day is that?
Twelve o'clock, I think they said.
And you're talking about the one with Fire Hall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Down at Tennessee City.
Thank you. So it's not this Saturday, but the next, is that what it?
Twelve. I think it is.
Okay, so this coming, this coming Saturday. Thank you. Any other announcements where I get Commissioner Simpkins? Commissioner Simpkins, you have an announcement?
I know, I know all, everybody probably knew Ms. Virginia Gray. She passed away between our meetings from the other meeting and this one. I just wanted to recognize her in the years that she's sat here on this commission and made some pretty hard decisions. I was fortunate enough to serve with her some of those years. Just wanted, just wanted, you know, everybody to remember, you know, because she was, she was kind of a mainstay here on this commission for many years. So I know many of us knew her and maybe some of us didn't, but she, she was a fine person.
Thank you, Commissioner Simpkins for bringing that up. Birthdays, after we inflicted the discipline we did last month, there were self-reporting done. Thank you, Commissioner Buckner. In two days, you'll have a happy birthday. The Brian Reagan singing we did scared Jackie Hodges so bad that he's self-reported. He has one tomorrow. Is anybody else on a report? Yes, you do. Oh.
Yeah.
Will, um.
Appreciate it. Hi, you're chilling.
You, you changed the dynamic of it. We've, we had, as y'all know, we had a lot of storm issues over the weekend and a lot of, good bit of property damage, but the Dixon Dome worked again. There were no injuries, unbelievably, or none of a serious kind. Want to thank the sheriff's department, Mr. Hodges and their department, EMA, Mr. Bear, Rob Fisher, EMS, the electric department, any other departments not directly affiliated with us. There's a lot of folks that, that do a lot of stuff for us to keep us safe and make our life easier. And so thank you to all of y'all for what y'all did. Great team, great team. But there's no other announcement. I'll make the final two announcements. The budget, the next budget meeting will be on May fifth at six PM in this office. At that point in time, we will present a county budget and also present a school budget. That will be at six o'clock in this. Apparently I did not send out who's on the budget committee, so I will send that to y'all tomorrow on that. We're in our basic four-person, three-year rotation. The last, anybody else have anything? The last announcement will be, the next work session will be on May fifth, two thousand twenty-five at seven PM. The Vifordale Booty Reed Junior, county commission chairman of the Dixon County Administration Building, Forecourt, Scourge, South Tennessee, have a motion.